Our corrections for you tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, security. No vacation we have done tonight. We'll just take a moment of silence, please. Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognizations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Well, council, you gotta help me out on this. See if we had so much going on in the last weekend in Hutch. I know that weren't spectacular. Uh, pottery festival, um, partying in the park. Anything else that was going on that anybody remembers?
The heat.
That wasn't a fun thing, woman. So just wanted to recognize all those uh celebrations. They brought a lot of people into town and we sure appreciate it. So and underneath there, we do have a resolution. We have resolution number one, five, three, three, five. Resolution accepting cash donation from the United Farmers Cooperative for the Hutchinson Fire Department.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose, Gary, help to comment. Uh, any citizen wants to address the council, please come forward, state your name and address. Already we have approval of minutes. Uh, we have the regular meeting minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And we have the city council workshop of July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
I did.
Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Of course, Gary. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is consideration for approval of reaffirmation of the City of Hutchinson data practices policies. Uh, B is consideration for approval of data classification policy. C is consideration for approval of the two thousand twenty-one wastewater lift station improvements. D is consideration for approval of holder of boiler replacement project at the city center. C is consideration for approval of upgrade construction management services fee process proposal with contingency group. F is consideration for approval of resolution number one, five, three, three, four. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reasons for approval of conditional use permit for the senior care facility in a R-two zoning district located at Seven Hand Park Island Drive Southwest with favorable planning commission recommendation. G is consideration for approval of issuing short-term gambling license to water four fourteen at the VFW Coast nine oh six. F is consideration for approval of suspension of noise ordinance for the Crow River Snow Pro's event on August thirteenth and fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Yep, a Cloud County Fairgrounds. I as claims appropriations and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose, Gary. Uh, we do not have a public hearing. Uh, do not have any communications requests and petitions. No unfinished business, new business. Uh, summary review and approval of the two thousand twenty audit conference annual financial report. Mr. Justin, how are you? Excited to be here.
I am doing great. I'm probably more excited than you guys already know. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're, we were here a little bit earlier at the workshop to go through in detail the city's twenty twenty year end annual financial report. And with us here is Lane Cockelman, the Audit Manager, that's been with us for a number of years here now. That's on behalf of Abdouiken Myers, and he's back now here to go through more of a summary version for you and answer any other questions that may have come up here in the last half hour since we, since we last met. And then at the end of this, we would look to you to formally approve this as well. And with that, Lane, come on up.
Well, thanks, Justin, and thanks for having me tonight, Mayor and Council. Uh, as Justin mentioned earlier, we went through this in detail about an hour ago. And so we're gonna provide just a really high level summary and quickly go through uh the twenty twenty audit results. And if there's any questions or input, feel free to add as we go. So for the twenty twenty audit, the city had a clean and unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Uh, there was no financial statement findings to report uh during twenty twenty. Uh, and every year, the city applies for the GFOA certificate, uh, which they received in twenty nineteen and applied for again in twenty twenty, uh, which is they've received every year since nineteen ninety-six. And that's just the highest level of um certificate you can get for governmental financial reporting. In twenty twenty, the city also expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal uh dollars that were received related to the CARES Act. Uh, so we did a specific program audit uh on that, and we did not have any compliance findings to report uh related to the single audit or the federal funding for that program. Uh, we also did not have any compliance requirements to report uh in the state side as well. So there was no compliance findings or any financial statement findings to report in twenty twenty. Uh, new standards implemented. There was none of significance uh in twenty twenty. Standards got pushed back because of COVID, uh, in the implementations. It's got moved back, so they were not implemented during the year. From a financial standpoint, the city's total net position increased by about eight and a half million dollars, and thus compared to a little under fourteen million dollars in the year prior. Governmental activities accounted for about a third of this related to some of the capital grants and also some additional contributions and funding from other resources. Uh, business types activities accounted for about two-thirds of the increase, mainly related to the water, sewer, electric, and gas operations, as we discussed earlier today. Uh, the main operating fund, the general fund, also saw an increase during twenty twenty related to various areas. Uh, the main uh reasoning being uh expenditures decreasing and being under budget related to some of the operations, operations that could not be performed during the year related to COVID. Uh, so one good measure of general fund liquidity is to compare fund balance to total expenditures in the general fund. That does represent about fifty-nine percent of total general fund expenditures, uh, which has increased over the past few years and is also well in excess of the city's fund balance policy of forty percent. The majority of the other governmental funds, the capital projects and special revenue funds do have positive fund balances and continue to see growth in both fund balances and cash balances. There are a few exceptions related to some capital projects and some tax increment funds that really is related to the timing of some of uh bond proceeds and grants and also some tax increment financing, uh, when that will be received to pay back some of those costs. Majority enterprise funds also have uh sufficient cash flows uh to fund both operational costs and debt payments. Uh, and also have seen a healthy building and cash reserves here over here to pay both the operational costs and those debt service payments, as we previously mentioned. Uh, so overall, the city continues to improve their, their financial health. Um, and they also had their bond rating reaffirmed during the year as well. Um, which gets looked at as they issue new bonds. Um, so important to note, um, any questions for me? All right. Well, we thank you for the opportunity. Um, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at your convenience. Uh, you should all have my contact information, otherwise Justin and Andy have it as well.
And once again, thanks. We had went through a more detailed uh presentation um prior to our council meeting. And like the important thing to note is you notice that the city is fiscally healthy, which obviously that's something we're all unhappy for. So with that, uh, Mayor Council, we ask you guys to consider um accepting the conference of annual financial report.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
I will second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the annual report. Any other questions, comments? Now call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Suppose, Gary. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone.
Ready, moving on. Uh, resolution number one, five, three, three, three. Resolution authorizing issuance of fourteen million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars general obligation bonds, series twenty, twenty-one A.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council members. So tonight, we're here to review the bids received on, on the bonds we're looking to sell to finance several uh capital projects for the year. Uh, we do this every year, mainly for roadway improvements. This year's a little larger bond offering. Um, we reviewed the projects last month, but I'll just mention them again. Um, we're bonding for about a four million dollars for a project out at the wastewater plant, the Headworks Project, we're calling it. And then additionally, seven point five million for our new police facility. So much larger bond offering uh than normal. Um, and we also have some tax abatement bonds that are gonna address uh the pedestrian crossing system on Highway seven in, in Montana Street, and then the Jefferson Street extension that you can see is already in progress. Um, so with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Nick. I won't spoil any of the good news. I'll let him share it. And then as you have questions, either Nick or myself will be available.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates, uh, advising the city on this bond issue and brought it to market. Um, I do have a couple of slides that we'll put up on the screen for the audience. Um, but the first one is, is really just what Andy touched on, the purpose for why we're here and the financing. As far as the components of the financing, you know, the bonds that are dedicated towards your infrastructure, your street infrastructure are gonna be paid back over a fifteen-year term, dedicated assessments and levy associated with that. Uh, the wastewater will be paid for from wastewater utility fund, and then the police facility projects, those will be paid back over a longer period of time, uh, thirty years, uh, from a dedicated tax levy. Um, this bond issuance was authorized by the council and subject to public hearings that were held in May. We are past those dates and the authorization is ready to go. All we have now is to actually receive proposals and consider uh terms for the financing. Uh, one thing that we did do that, and I know your audit makes mention of having the rating affirmed. We've actually done that now again. Uh, so now in twenty twenty-one, your uh bond rating at double A minus has been affirmed by Standard and Poor's once again, no big surprise. Um, but certainly uh good news uh relative to some of the chaos that we've seen in the financial markets, as well as the pandemic and uncertainty of the recovery. Um, that report is available. I certainly would welcome you all to uh review it at, at your leisure. It does give you a third-party snapshot of the financial health of the community as a whole. Can be a useful term to kind of understanding some of the decisions that the council certainly is making, but just to paraphrase, everything seems in uh good standing from the last time that you've been evaluated. They note there has been some gradual increases in the economy, no uh big swings relative to the pandemic, which is a good thing. Um, they do note that you do have another year of solid performance within your general fund. Um, but there was some uh larger capital spending and, and waiting on some of those grant proceeds that were just mentioned. So you did receive an adequate budgetary performance. We'd expect that to be in the strong category in the future as some of that spending uh dies down, that one-time spending. Uh, however, across the board, everything else relating uh remains in line with some of the past reports that we've seen and certainly paints a good picture for Hutchinson. So uh all of these things uh are, are positive indicators. Next slide. We received five bids on the bonds uh this morning with the winning bid coming from Baird, not out of their Milwaukee branch, but out of New, the New Jersey, their New York office. Um, proposing to purchase the bonds at one point six percent on a true interest cost basis, and that is for the entirety of the bonds over thirty years. Um, so last fall, the city sold a smaller amount of bonds for street projects on a fifteen-year term. And you price those at about one point zero eight percent. On a thirty-year term, we're, we're less than a half a point higher uh in this case. And I am very pleased with these results. All five bids are within point one five percent of each other. Um, so a very tight spread between those, which does give us some kind of indication that there's a consistency among the bidders. Now Baird in particular, their interest cost that they're proposing in comparison to the high bid from Bank of America and their, their desk is about a two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar swing. Um, and that's primarily due again because this is a very long-term bond that we're talking about, thirty years of accrual. So even though it's a very small difference in the rate, it does add up quite a bit over time. So with thi- this bid, uh, we're going to be below all of our expectations. You know, we were predicting something in the realm of maybe two point one percent uh a month ago, and so this is a very good result. Uh, we're able to resize the bonds to thirteen million, eighty thousand dollars. This is gonna give us the same amount of proceeds, actually uh about two hundred and fifty thousand more in proceeds for the police facility. And at a, at a lower cost uh than anticipated. So our, our levy amounts associated with the infrastructure projects, the abatement and the police facility are all below the levels that we were predicting just a month ago. And then certainly as well for the wastewater facility, those amounts uh coming in uh lower than uh what was uh budgeted and expected. And again, you are receiving some additional proceeds for the police facility that we can save right now and, and we can hold off on bonding for that next year when you finish off that project. So very good results across the board. Um, and this kind of gives a snapshot of all those levels and where they're at. Um, and so for the council's consideration, you know, pending any questions that you have, there is a resolution before the council to award the sale of bonds to the low proposal from Baird. Uh, that resolution has been updated uh by Dorsey and Whitney and provided to staff, so they have that on hand. Uh, and does say it's a resolution relating to thirteen million, eighty thousand dollars in general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-one A, authorizing their issuance, awarding the sale, fixing form and detail, providing for the execution and delivery thereof and security therefore, and levying ad valorem taxes for the payment thereof. And I said that so that you don't have to.
Thank you very much.
That resolution uh will award the purchase of the bonds to Baird under the terms of the low bid. Uh, will provide for their execution, and then we'll have that all wrapped up for closing on August nineteenth. And that's when the funds will be wired into the city's accounts so that you can reimburse some of your expenses made and then continue to make payments on the police facility project. So very good results and very pleased. It's not one point oh eight percent like last year, but it's a very good result. And we're, we're very happy with it. So congratulations.
Were you surprised? What, five bids? Or is that probably usually average, or?
I think we're, we're very pleased when we get above three um for our smaller issuers every year. This one was a bigger one. So we thought we'd get a little bit of a different audience, and the audience is actually very different. It's much more of the larger firms from the East Coast predominantly. And so I mentioned Baird, you know, Baird is, will bid on the city's bonds quite frequently, but it's their Milwaukee office. Uh, and this is their New York office that's coming to purchase this one. So uh we're pleased with where things are at. We think that's why they're a little bit more aggressive on the rates. You know, they're attracted to that size. And so we're, we're, we're happy with this.
It's good news.
It's good news. Yes.
Do you think we lost some bidders being over our bank qualification for the year?
I think it changes things. So I, I think, um, so as Andy mentions, um, under the tax code, there's a special benefit given to what's called small issuers. Issuers that stay below ten million in an annual, in a, in a, on a yearly basis. Um, that benefit gives banks who purchase the bonds some of the benefit of tax exemption, not just some of the retail investors like, like you or I in our retirement portfolios. This tax exemption, we're able to benefit from that. Banks who hold these bonds for their own portfolios aren't necessarily able to do that. But when they are called bank qualified, they do get that benefit. So we'll see them be a little bit more aggressive for small issuers. Um, because of that. Now, this was a larger one. Uh, we think we took a little bit of a hit on the rate per se because of that. But uh we were able to offset that by attracting, again, this kind of aggressive uh mix of purchasers. So I, I think I would say it's a great result, and we were being a little conservative when we said two point one percent um because of that. And it looks like uh city came through quite, quite a bit better.
You ready to take a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? Not call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Suppose, Gary. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Congrats.
Thank you. Moving on, uh, funding to move the Harrington Merrill Barn to its original site.
Um, Mayor and Council, a couple of months ago, we had an update from Historic Hutch. Um, obviously their, their work within the community and, and some of the, the current projects that, um, that they're addressing. During that presentation, um, it was brought up of uh the city's possession of what was the original barn site after we purchased the, the lot at uh the Franklin Street location. Couple weeks ago, we received a request um from Historic Hutch um to the city to assist in, in moving that barn from its current site to the, to the, to its original site over by the Harrington Merrill House. And so in front of you tonight for consideration, um, there's a letter you received from Historic Hutch. Um, they've got an estimated cost of about fifty thousand dollars um to move that. Um, and I spoke with Jim earlier this morning through an email, about fifteen thousand of that is for a move. For the moving of the, the barn, another fifteen is for the foundation of which that barn will be placed on at the, the Harrington Merrill site. And then they estimated about another ten to fifteen thousand in miscellaneous costs to, I guess, get everything set in place, if you wanna say, um, on that site. Um, with the proposals that is front of you tonight, um, you know, since the, since the, the project or the building is on land that's already owned um by the city. Um, and I don't believe this was referenced in here, and I know Jim's here to clarify it. I don't think they're asking necessarily for us to cut a check to Historic Hutch. Um, it's more or less to help fund in this project. And if we were to move forward with it, my recommendation is that that'd be undertaken by the city. You know, through getting the contractors in place to do that. Obviously, we work closely with Historic Hutch, but that way it also assists us in controlling the funds. Not that I'd be worried about, you know, fifty thousand dollars, but any exact cost would be coming out of our pocket butts, po- pocket butts to do that. And if you were to move forward with it, um, yeah, I'd recommend that the funding come out of the Community Improvement Fund. So that's kind of a brief summary of the project. So I'll turn it over to Council. Let's see if any questions for me, or we do have a representative in the audience too on this project or this request.
I think that, um, you need to, they need to realize that it might not be quite fifty thousand dollars. It could be less than that. That is the maximum amount that they're looking at.
Yeah, I guess I, I talked to Miles before this, uh, for the meeting. I, I uh was wondering the timeline on uh clearing the site for the development. Miles would kind of touch on that a little bit for us.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I, I think, um, if the council decides to move ahead with this, we'll just coordinate with Historic Hutch and uh proceed along the lines that Matt talked about to move that out and, you know, aiming for a September timeframe. And then we'll just, we'll just work with those guys, and our goal would be that the barn structure be moved and then we'll demolish whatever's left probably the very next day. I mean, it's gonna be very closely coordinated.
Miles, is there a timeframe on which you guys want to have that done, or is there any?
Um, I think, yeah, it's our goal to get it done in this fall. Yep.
So I guess I, my thought would be, uh, maybe uh table it to see what exactly the cost would be to at least move it from the current site to the Harrington Merrill site. Just.
Jim, would you come up and enlighten?
Uh, Jim Fahy, four forty-six Main Street South. The bid is fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars to move the house. The contractor that we talked to about the foundation, uh, said it would be about twelve thousand. Um, so, you know, we estimated it at fifteen, uh, be, just because of the way things are going with construction costs. Uh, but the fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars to move the structure itself, that is a firm number from time movers. And they are aware of that timeframe. Um, originally, when we started this discussion, it would be by September first, but they're also aware in discussion with the EDA uh that would, could happen sometime in September. Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
So you're still thinking about tabling it?
Well, I mean, now that we have a number, I didn't know that Jim had a firm number on, on actually just moving it.
So there was a request to split that moving cost at EDA, and that was already denied, just for information.
But the EDA?
Yep, the EDA, EDA Board voted to deny that.
All right.
I can't say a whole lot. I'm, I'm in a, I'm kind of in a compromised position. I'm the president of Historic Hutch, so it's like, I'm you know, I can't bring forth a motion because I'm gonna abstain from voting on it. But you have my thoughts on that, you know. I mean, it is a part of our city. It was the original barn. I know that that's money, you know, from our community fund. I also know that once it's gone, it's gone forever. We will never have that chance again to bring it back. So those are my thoughts.
All right. Dave, your thoughts?
I think if you're, you know, when you're on one side with the historical society and then you're on the other side of the fence, you know, one's for it, one's against it, so to speak. And uh basically I have, uh, I didn't hear a lot of positive comments, uh, uh, from constituents, if you wish to call them that, or the people that citizens have. So I guess basically I'm uh kind of sitting on the fence. So I like history, but constituents don't like spending money. So I'm uh, I'm a kind of on the downward side of things rather than the upward side of things.
Do you want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to disapprove it.
Okay, I would second that.
All right, we have a motion by Dave, second by Chad to deny the funding. All in favor?
Aye.
Suppose. Mary's.
I'm abstaining.
I'm staying. So it's denied. All right. All right, uh purchase agreement and development agreement with the Hutch Uptown Commons LLC.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um just a short um informational uh item here about this project. Um basically, tonight, we're just requesting City Council approval of a purchase agreement and a development agreement. Both of those are in your packet. And then also authorization for staff to sign documents. And this is for the Hutchinson Uptown Commons project. Basically, um just to give you a little bit of background, the E D A has been working on redeveloping this area of downtown for a number of years now. So um the area in question, it's a block west of Main Street, and it's at it's at the north end of Franklin Street. And so back in twenty sixteen, the E D A purchased and removed uh an old office building that was blighted. And then more recently, we purchased the Franklin House um just last year. So basically, the proposal is that uh a project would be to put in rental townhomes on those two lots. So this is just kind of a concept plan. By no means is this the final version. It's just showing you the the broad strokes of how it could develop. So just bear in mind that this will change and but the basic idea is rental townhomes. And there's enough space there for probably fifteen units at a minimum. They can probably get in a couple more, but we set sort of a a baseline of fifteen units to be built. This would be a twenty twenty-two project, so next year this would take off. And then, as I mentioned, you know, this is kind of the small version of the project. It could become more if we if we get lucky. The two agreements, I'll just summarize briefly. The purchase agreement just makes note that the city is selling one twenty-six and one thirty-five Franklin Street to the developer, which is Hutch Uptown Commons. The price would be one dollar. And we did that just because we wanted to incentivize some developer to take a project and and do a project in that area. Couple of years, well, several years back, we set up a redevelopment tax increment financing district. And the way that that will work is that the developer's gonna build the rental townhomes. They will pay their property taxes. We will capture a slice of those property taxes to reimburse the E D A for our expenses on that in that area. So that when we'll get reimbursed for the purchase of those properties and the removal of the buildings and so forth. And then the purchase agreement has a provision in it that construction must begin within eighteen months and that it needs to be rental townhomes. And then there's also a provision in there that if the project gets canceled or something happens, then the developer can sell that lot back to the city for a dollar. So we'll get it back in the end if the project does not happen. Then there's a development agreement, and basically that just says that the the city's gonna reimburse itself for qualified costs by way of the tax increment. Um and then it it defines the private improvements or what the developer has to do as a minimum fifteen unit townhome complex. And then there's a minimum assessment agreement uh that we need to put together as well. And that just sets the property taxes at a level that's gonna be high enough in order to make the TIF district work. Couple of a couple additional notes. Um you know, what I showed you on the screen, that was just the small version of the project. We're hopeful that it's actually gonna become a bigger project. Um couple of years, gosh, it's been a couple of years already. We put in a a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to get a little bit more than half a million dollars. And that's for property acquisition and demolition of these properties on the northwest corner of the block. There's three properties there. So if we get the FEMA grant, hopefully, we would acquire those properties and then probably remove everything on the west side of the block. Then there would be a bigger project, and that bigger project would be something that's looks similar to that. So not exactly that, but that just gives you just the idea of it. Um and then we'll find out about the grant in September or October coming up. Um and this is just concept drawing, so it it's very preliminary. They could look something like that. It could look a little bit different. That's subject to change. But we just wanted to show the City Council the general direction that we're moving in for this project. So next steps and timeline, um if the City Council approves the purchase agreement and the development agreement, uh we would get those documents signed yet this month. Um in August, we would transfer the properties to the developer. In September, the Franklin House would be removed. Uh sometime in September, October, we'll find out about the FEMA grant. Over the course of the fall and winter, we'll go through the site plan review process, and the developer will put together a formal plan. And that'll be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and then that would come before the City Council for final approval. So you'll see all this again. And then towards the end of next summer, I believe, would be when pro- uh construction begins. And then about a year later, uh these would start opening up. So um with that, tonight, we're just seeking your approval for the purchase agreement, for the development agreement, and then the okay for staff to sign documents. So with that, um do you guys have any questions?
It's a good project. That that medical clinic property has been sitting vacant long enough.
And a huge a huge need for housing in Hutchinson, so we're excited about the opportunity to do something with that.
Absolutely.
Can entertain a motion to approve the purchase agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I will second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor? Gary, thanks, Miles.
And just to be clear now, did that cover all the everything there? Was that an emotion?
Yes.
Yes. Do all the above.
Yep, it was listed as a purchase agreement and development agreement.
Okay, perfect. Okay, good. All right.
We got you covered.
All right, I appreciate that.
Water wastewater preliminary rate structure and ethnology. Evening, Kent, how are you?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Refreshing memory, how to use this thing. Been a while.
No, teach you to go on vacation.
And the light, yeah. Turn the light on, do you have the? Oh, yeah, we clicked that on. We're getting there. Is the ammo cooked? There we go. All right, uh yes, we're back uh to talk uh water and wastewater rates. Following our discussion at the uh council's workshop at the prior to the last council meeting. Uh and this evening, what we've wanna bring forward and discuss is the handout that's in front of you. And I'm gonna jump to the back page and and talk a bit about rates. And you know, all of this was obviously provided in more detail within that council workshop presentation that uh Karen Cabot with S C H worked through at the uh that evening, I should say. And what we have here is we took that those two tables that I referenced in the council packet. And we uh we actually elaborated on primarily the the change we elaborated on was the the R E Us and what those apply to, and then I'll touch on the irrigation um meter rates and how that balances between water and wa- wastewater or sanitary sewer, as it's been alluded to here. So we'll start with the sewer rates. Uh the connection charge, the base charge, uh like uh Ms. Cabot alluded to at the workshop. Uh we're trying to allocate more of the fixed costs to do the operations of both the water and the sewer to the base charge, and that's similar to a lot of communities. And you know, we're not pushing the limits on that. You know, a lot of communities will want, they'll shoot to account for seventy-five percent of those costs, those fixed costs to be charged within the base charge. Uh we landed at about thirty forty percent is is what, just to do some balancing. And uh I guess uh balance out the impacts between different user groups uh that uh exist within our community. So the the connection charge, the base charge will be going from six forty-one to uh ten dollars. Uh that's for the smallest meter size. That's the other significant change.
Strobe lighting.
Uh anyways, um yeah, so now we'll be charging based on the actual meter size. And this will apply to both the the sewer rates and the water rates. And uh you know, this was that A W W A criteria that's been well adopted by many communities across the country. Uh so there'll be a a variety of base charges. Uh and you know, that'll start with the residential meter size of three quarters of an inch. You know, like I said, that'll be ten dollars, and then it'll escalate from there. Uh you know, your larger industrial, commercial type users, if they have a uh four inch meter per se, they will be charged two hundred and fifty dollars a month. And that's that's truly accounting for the capacity that's available to those users. And and it really, it might drive, you know, specific users, commercial, industrial, to downsize their readers. We understand that, but this is the fairest way to go about this. Where, you know, your lower end users are paying their share, yes, at ten dollars. But on the other hand, your higher end users with a four inch, six inch meter that have the ability to take on that much more water, and the system's built, in essence, for those larger users. You know, they should be paying their fair share on the on the top end. And obviously, with six forty-one, six dollars and forty-one cents, you know, occupying that column top to bottom, that hasn't been the case historically here in Hutchinson. So that's 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 a big change. And then, you know, that's that's based on the on the uh, you know, the three quarter inch residential meter. I should expand on the residential uh equivalent unit. Uh this will be applied to multi uh unit residential. So your, you know, your duplexes, your fourplexes, you know, your larger apartment buildings, you know, you get down into the newer apartment buildings where they have, you know, roughly thirty units in them. Realizing that they don't capture all the water use that a single family home necessarily does. You know, they obviously, you know, don't have a yard, probably they're not watering their own plantings outside. They're not typically washing their cars in the driveways or anything of that nature. So what's uh what's being applied is a sixty-five percent adjustment. So you know, you take that sixty-five percent against ten dollars, that equates to a six dollars and fifty cents per unit per multi-family unit. And I apologize if this is redundant, you know, obviously with respect to the workshop, but just wanna make sure that we're on the same page and what we're gonna be asking you to approve here later. Uh commodity wise and volume wise, all users, uh you know, this is across the board. So this doesn't matter what size meter you have. For one thousand gallons, you pay six dollars and forty-two cents. Uh just by chance and then, you know, a little bit of balancing uh at the end as we develop these rates. Yeah, that does mirror uh the the current rate today. So you know, that's our proposed starting point for twenty twenty-two uh per one thousand gallons. Irrigation meters, and this this can get a little confusing. We'll talk more about it when we get into the water rates. But uh we're gonna be charging, the proposal is to charge users for every gallon of wastewater, of every gallon of water that's that's measured, that's metered. So either let's use six thousand gallons. So you're gonna, you know, for your residential user at a three quarter of an inch, uh you know, meter size, use six thousand gallons. You know, you're gonna pay the ten dollars for your base charge, your connection charge. And you're gonna pay six times six forty-two, obviously, you know, which arrives at roughly thirty-eight dollars and change. If all of that isn't domestic use that's being arrived at, you know, the water coming in your home isn't going down your sewer, let's say three thousand of that is irrigation water. You're gonna wanna get a meter and irrigation meter, which will then deduct that three thousand gallons from the six. And you'll be charged zero dollars per thousand on the wastewater side of things. So instead of paying, you know, roughly thirty-eight dollars, now you'll be paying nine, ten dollars plus nineteen dollars. And that'll get reduced off of your wastewater bill.
So can't you, what was the cost of a irrigation meter?
Yeah, that's gonna be depend on your situation and your internal plumbing and what a plumber needs to do. The meter itself is just over a hundred dollars, but you're looking at paying a plumber all of that, having another couple hundred or so to put the meter in. So you're
Almost better off just to figure it.
Yeah, it's all gonna, yeah, it's all gonna depend on how much you irrigate. You know, that's what the math honestly comes down to. And we'll talk a little bit more about this when we get through the water here also.
And Kent, the biggest change from where we are today is right now, we're using your January and February.
Yep.
Averaging averaging that out throughout the year. And that's gonna change from going to monthly usage now.
Yep, it's true monthly usage. Uh likewise, on the waterfront, uh the base charge, the connection charge is going up slightly. You know, down below, you'll see the nine dollars uh reflected in the three quarter inch meter size. That's your typical residential meter size. Uh R E Us, similar approach, uh sixty-five percent to nine is uh five dollars eighty-five cents for each multi-family unit. Uh you know, then obviously, depending on the your meter size, your your charges, you know, graduate upwards. And then uh on the commodity side, this is where the conservation rates come into play that are mandated to municipalities per state statute that we've been talking about for some time here. And you know, we are finally addressing within these proposed rate revisions. We're proposing three blocks, uh less than six thousand gallons, up to six thousand gallons, I should say. And then up to twelve thousand gallons, and then beyond twelve thousand gallons for a residential user. The rates graduate upwards also. Uh they go from three dollars, you know, your your amount of water under six thousand, from six thousand to twelve thousand, three dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand. And then beyond twelve thousand, four dollars sixty-nine cents. And this is really what the D N R in the states requiring of municipalities. They wanna crack, really what they wanna do is crack down on residential users to encourage, you know, conservation measures. And and primarily, that's irrigation related to to a large degree. But they also realize if you have a tiered structure, that may and should incline people take measures, you know, conservation measures uh to decrease their water use. Uh they don't wanna see the old flat rate that's reflected, you know, under twenty twenty-one here at four dollars and thirty-four cents. And they really don't wanna see what's below here, our current non-residential uh volume charge of it's a decreasing block. So actually, how we have it set up, and we're not showing the tiers here. But uh we have a declining block structure that starts with your lower end users, your residential, single-family uh residents paying four dollars thirty-four cents per thousand. And as you use more water and you're an industrial user on the top end, you're only paying two dollars and thirty-six cents per thousand. And that's what we need to move away from. Uh we are moving, what we're proposing is that all usage for non-residential users. So this is commercial, uh light commercial, you know, larger commercial, big box commercial, you know, light industrial, uh heavier industrial, larger industrials such as three M, obviously. Just a flat, you know, rate of three dollars per thousand. And that's, you know, you can see that some averaging to some degree there of our existing declining block And that's, you know, you can see that some averaging to some degree there of our existing declining block structure. Uh like what was alluded to at the workshop, a a lot of these commercial, whether you're a restaurant or. A big box retailer or even you get into our smaller, medium, larger industrial users, you know. They're trying to conserve water already, they realize this is, you know, they're bi- they're business people. You know, especially the larger industries and three M specifically, they've been trying to do this for years, conserve water. So the conservation measures and trying to set up a tiered structure. You know, to have them pay more really isn't a goal of this rate methodology. Uh they're already trying to do that, uh they're they're basically fixed into their water use. You know, they it depends on what they're trying to sell, what they're trying to produce, uh you know, what their operations are. So that's the, you know, that's the uh. The methodology, the reasoning behind just the flat rate at three dollars per thousand for those non-residential users. Uh and then we get back into irrigation meters and and this will, you know, this basically. Takes the revenues and puts them where they need to be when people irrigate, so if you, like I said, that scenario before. If you're using, you know, your single family home residential user, you know. Using a total of six thousand gallons, three thousand of it, you know, for the month of June is is irrigation water. Then you would pay three thousand, you know, three times four dollars and sixty nine cents per thousand. Which is the top end of the residential tier, that would continue to mirror itself over time. So in, so instead of paying the benefit then is you're you're paying. Three thousand gallons at four sixty nine, instead of paying, if you did have an irrigation meter. You would be paying that three thousand gallons at six forty two on the sewer side. But you would also be paying for it on your water bill regardless, because it's gonna be metered. If you understand what I say, if you don't have this deduct meter to do, help the city do the math. And really get the revenues where they need to be with respect to sewer and water, you would then be paying. You don't have that meter, you're paying six forty two for that water on the sewer side and you're still paying. Whatever bracket you're in, you well, in this scenario, you'd be in the the uh three dollar. So you'd be paying nine dollars forty two cents for that water instead of four sixty nine. If that makes sense, so that's real really where the real value of having irrigation meter starts to play out. That allows us to do that math, set up the billing program software accordingly. And and try to benefit people that elect to irrigate and. You know, allow them to still irrigate and arrive at a fair, you know, a fair billing, a fair revenue from the city's standpoint.
Kent, at the workshop, I I didn't think about it at that point, but have you uh run any scenarios on uh. Different usages uh for.
Yep, and no, that's all within the workshop information. There were comparisons within that PowerPoint.
Yeah.
So I I in a nutshell, in summary, the uh the lower end users and. That's the balancing we did that I alluded to earlier with these connection, you know, charges, the base charge. And we brought that down to ten dollars. Our original goal was to offset more of the fixed charges. With that base charge, but we brought that down to really protect the lower end user. And and what we saw and what we arrived at is basically the low end user, you know, your, you know, grandma and grandpa. You know, no, no kids at home, you know, very little water use, they're trying to probably conserve and. And and uh we're, we respect that and they're 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 doing alright, it's basically equal. If not a little less in some scenarios, and it's tough to make an exact comparison, because there's all, obviously all sorts of dynamics that can. Come and play on the exact numbers, but the other users that come out alright are actually in. And and Karen went through the scenarios with those three industries, you know, and that varies. Uh you know, depending on the exact use from the industries, but uh you know, the industries are are doing alright. Uh the ones that we're probably gonna hear from the most are the, you know, the apartment owners, you know, the multi-unit. Rentals who quite frankly have been getting a break for a long time due to the nuance that existed within our old. Rate structure and and they're not being, you know, with the the water use being at three dollars, like I said. Uh the the waste or the water volume commodity uh rate, they they're coming out alright in the end and. And it gets into how many units you have, you know, your overall meter size. You know, that you have coming into your your duplex, your eightplex, your, you know, however many units, so. You know, they might be able to downsize their meter and and decrease, you know, both their their uh. Connection charges, their base charges on both sides of the equation, sewer and water, to to do alright in the end. But they're the ones that are gonna notice it the most.
Dave, and one of the reasons we're we're having this discussion tonight is. Cause we're trying to get authorization from the council to at least go forward to the public with these numbers, so to answer your question, we've got. Sheets of data, so we're submitting Collins, say, okay, right now I I average eight thousand gallons a month, what? What am I looking at for costs? So yes, we've got those laid out in spreadsheets, so we could easily tell a resident that. Okay, based out of eight thousand gallons. Yeah, this is what your twenty twenty two rate is gonna be compared to twenty twenty one, realizing, you know, that can change from month to month.
So Kent, what you're saying, I mean, I understand the rate structure and that, but what you're saying is. Your bill is going to be based on what you've used in the previous month, right?
Oh, definitely, yeah, I mean, you will always be billed on a volume basis.
Right.
But the biggest change is what people are gonna see, especially with larger meter sizes. That have the capability to pull more water and produce more wastewater is, you know, your base charge is gonna go up, you know. Because, you know, at your home today, you pay the same base charge as three M pays on a meter.
Right.
You know, so there's been some, and then our our rate structure has been skewed. You know, to higher end users, you know, with the declining block and that base charge dynamic for a long time. And and like I said, the goal of this wasn't necessarily to, we know a lot of times and. You see this in other communities and you know, other utilities, you know, you do a rate study to generate more revenue. I mean, that's the truth a lot of the times, this, that isn't the case here. We're trying to really to right-size, you know, some nuances, some what I would even call unfairness. Within the existing rate structure to really bring it up to speed. And to obviously address the D N R's conservation rates, yeah.
Well, it kinda goes to you're getting charged for what you're using and what's going down the sewer.
Yep.
Before I was, like you said, what was it, January, February or?
January and February, yeah. Yeah, I I would say for your normal residential user who wants to water their yard during the summer. This will have an impact because right now you're not paying that extra water in your sewer charge. And if you don't get a irrigation meter, you now will be, and so maybe instead of it being. Twenty bucks a month higher during the summer, it might be forty if you don't have an irrigation system in place, and so I think that's another. Um you know, difference you might see, and this is as I was sharing with Dave, one of the reasons we. Kent and I talked about wanting to bring this forward is that we wanna be able to go out to the public and start educating them on this is what the rate changes are. But we wanna make sure the council's comfortable with this format before we obviously went and did it and then. Probably December, when we approve our our rates is when you'd be looking to approve. These potential rates that should go into effect in twenty twenty one, or twenty twenty two, I'm sorry.
Well, I think that you guys covered all the bases, you got all the. All the information down that how you determine what the rates would be, so.
Yeah, no, this has been a long exercise, you know, there's a lot of background information out there.
We started in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, exactly, you know, obviously finance, uh Mister Reed here has been heavily involved in. And Justin for that matter and yeah, I think from staff standpoint, we're very comfortable with this approach and and like I said. Uh addresses multiple items, issues, whatever you may wanna call them, so. With that, like Matt alluded to and the other piece of the handout there, and I don't know if we wanna go into in any detail. On the outreach and input, you know, process, but uh between myself and Mister Paulson primarily here. Will be administering that, you know, we'll be addressing different users a little differently, you know, like what's alluded to in there, you know, we're gonna. We're gonna, you know, reach out to our, you know, our single family residential users, we can feel we can do that more from a mass. Approach, you know, whether it's inserts into the billing, you know, Facebook, uh newspaper articles, city website. You know, such and try to get the word out, like I alluded to earlier, multi-unit. You know, owners, I we're gonna do that more personally or try to do it more personally and. And I think the first step would be inviting them to a public open house type meeting to work through different scenarios for their. Situations and you know, we're, we're not trying to hide anything here, you know, it is what it is and like Matt said, we can do the math for them. And it's, yeah, and we'll we'll gather input and we'll bring that back to council. Uh we'll meet with the industrial users uh independently, uh we do that. Anyways, for our wastewater affluent permits that we set up with them, so. Uh you know, we have those relationships already with our our larger industrial users, so. Uh we'll we'll share that with them and I think maybe the last group is our our commercial users. You know, the variety of commercial users out there, you know, I think that'll be more of a a broad brush approach also, you know. And and maybe there's a, you know, maybe there's an open house, we haven't quite figured that out, but uh maybe we can. Do an open house approach with them also, that that's really it in summary. And we hope to do that over the next couple of months, cause ultim- ultimately, I think the goal is. To hopefully get a blessing towards the end of September, October, so then. Andy can, you know, reflect these changes within the city's fee schedule and and our enterprise fund budgets that. Come your way in what, November, more than likely?
September or December.
Yeah. How easy you have a workshop in November, don't we?
Oh, November workshop.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks Kent.
Yep, thank you.
I guess I'm comfortable with it, uh so. Entertainer motion to approve it?
I would make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Okay, Mary, you can second it. Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the rate structure wastewater.
Preliminary structure, so.
Yep.
Any other discussion, hold on favor? I both carry. Uh implementation of water conservation plan, Mister Paulson.
Good evening, helpful Mister Mayor, you shut this off on me and I wanna turn it back on. That's alright, everything I have in front of me is in front of you. Uh we received a letter from the Minnesota D N R here a little over week, week and a half ago. Um because of the drought across the state and within the watershed that were within the Mississippi River watershed. Um the governor has taken action to try to conserve water. To reduce long-term impacts from aquifers and water use within our waterways. Um one of the things relative to that is uh they're asking city water suppliers or large water suppliers, which the city is. To implement water conservation reduction measures. Um the goal for the city of Hutchinson. Uh the simple math is if we typically see two two million gallons per day in January. When people aren't watering their lawns and using it for outdoor uses, um they wanna see less than a fifty percent increase in summer months. So if it's two million in January, that would be three million in July. Um currently, we're at about one point six million is our January average for this past January and we're at two point four, so we're right at the cusp there. But that's a target, um we bounce up, bounce down below that from week to week. Um so what the city's proposing and through the ordinance and the water conservation, water supply plan that the city has in place. Um what we're asking the council to do is implement a nine A M to six P M water use restriction for outdoor water use. Um otherwise, people continue to irrigate their lawn in the evenings or overnight, um really, it's intended to target um water waste during the daytime. Um using that water outside during the peak temperatures of the day, obviously, we have evaporation, it's much more prevalent during those time periods. You lose more water in your soil, um so on so forth, so uh it's really a common sense practice, there's many communities around us, uh. Was talking to Mark uh earlier today, Raccoon itself, that is a standard practice every year, all the time. Um you're not irrigating your lawn in the middle of the day, just a lot of times, it just doesn't make sense to do that. So um as part of our water conservation plan, that is one of the actions that the city has in place, it's the lowest level action that we have. Um there are other steps too, if uh by implementing that, um we still aren't able to achieve that. Uh fifty percent increase over our January average for uh the summer months, um we could implement additional measures as necessary, but at this point in time. Um we're close enough, uh we believe that that'll be just enough for us to stay underneath that state, the state drought goal that they're uh targeting. And then what they're proposing for cities to implement, I think we can achieve that um with some compliance relative to that requirement, I know it's new for Hutchinson. Uh that might be a little bit of a challenge uh for some, but certainly, I think uh through the efforts of outreach. Um similar to what we were just talking about on the rates side of thing, would be to reach out to the newspaper, Facebook page, website. Um to get that information out there to inform people that that would be a new restriction in place. Um obviously, I don't believe it would extend past the summer months, typically, people aren't watering their lawn in October or November anyways. Uh grass goes dormant and whatnot, so um it wouldn't extend to past September more than likely, I don't even know if it would make it that far. Um but really, it's gonna depend on what our water uses, if we get down to say two million gallons every week on average, um I think we could lift it sooner. Rather than later if we so choose to, but um that is what city's proposing at this time. Um per ordinance, uh Matt could take action on it immediately, but we figured the timing of it with the council packet last week and getting that out in a timely fashion. Uh we're gonna two birds, one stone uh by bringing it directly to you tonight, so the city has not implemented any conservation measures or requirements at this time, but. Um we're asking you to consider that and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You know, just for clarification, this would be between nine A M and six P M. Um and it's really regarding, you know, lawn and garden sprinkling, irrigation, personal car washing during that time. I would assume, John, if somebody just laid sod, um there's probably exceptions that we could make, so we're not uh. You know, having.
I've been out and about, Matt, um I haven't seen any sod go down in quite some time, I mean, that's primarily the reason why. Um the success of something like that in conditions like this is very difficult to.
I'd be surprised too if somebody were doing that.
Um even even with sod, I believe you can accomplish uh watering, you know, you're gonna get better in, better effects and better. Results by watering um outside of that nine to six window anyways, so.
Yeah, so like I said, it's not not well banned, it's just restricting that time where. Would impact most when it comes to evaporation and and the such.
Entertainer motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? Call me if you have a favor. Both carry.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have minutes, reports from committees, boards or commissions, we have the. Sustainability Board Advisory Board minutes from April nineteenth, two thousand twenty one. We have the Public Arts Commission minutes from June tenth, two thousand twenty one. We have the Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from June fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. Planning Commission minutes from June fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. Quarterly Public Arts Commission Financial Update. And the City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Restment Reports for June twenty. For June of two thousand twenty one. For June of two thousand twenty one. John, do you have anything else for us tonight? Alrighty, thank you, Kent?
Yes, two uh quick project updates, uh pavement management program now by the Red Center, things continue to go well. Uh they're just finishing up the concrete work, then we should be looking forward to paving in the near future on the main streets and then. Ultimately, be at the parking lot uh doing the final recourse in the month, early September. Uh Jefferson and First North, yeah, things are proceeding out there, they're they're just starting the uh sanitary sewer work. Uh the half block or so that we're doing up on the first avenue here, so they started that today. Uh they'll get that done in the next, well, they had some issues today, so it'll probably be a couple more days and then they'll uh start grading Jefferson and. Doing the concrete, excuse me, start grading first avenue and then doing the concrete work on first. Then lastly, Highway seven Montana crossing, uh yeah, obviously with all the traffic control out there, you can't miss it. That's being required by the state, uh yeah, they're underway, they did the uh concrete removals today, so. That should move pretty quickly from every indication, they're gonna be ordering uh signal pole bases, I believe on Thursday here. And then those will cure out and you might start seeing uh poles going up, you know, towards uh probably the end of next week possibly. That's it.
Kent, did you miss it, did you even talk to them directly or?
Yeah, yeah, like I said, paving, yeah, pr- probably on the streets. Towards the end of the month and then, wow, it might actually happen uh within the next week or so. And uh and we're, of course, waiting to see what happens after pool, you know, and uh, you know. Yeah, so we might be pating with a say that. Um yeah, so we might be paving that sooner than later, yeah, yeah, the pool, yeah, season, whenever the pool season's over.
Nothing else tonight?
Uh I think I I had the opportunity to sit on the Mid-Minnesota Economic Development uh Commission. That's a headquarter out of uh Wilmer and uh sit on the Subcommittee of uh Rural Transportation. And they are looking for volunteer drivers and there is a lot of information on uh W W W M M R D C dot org. And uh if you got an interest in that, there's guidelines, there's all kinds of uh information that can clue you into uh. What you may wanna do as a volunteer driver or what you may not wanna do, if you don't wanna do it, but uh there's a serious hurt for uh. Uh volunteer drivers uh all around, actually, in probably all four counties that are represented it represented and that's uh. McCloud County, Ohio, Enville and uh Wright County, and uh so they're really in the search for those drivers that can assist. People that either take, need to take buses or whatever transportation they can find to get to areas of either health. And or food and or clothing, whatever that may be, so. Uh I encourage you, if you have an interest to do that, uh that you would look into that uh. Website and uh find their uh what they require, they don't have so much requirement, but they have a lot of information of who you could help and how you can help, so. Appreciate if you do that. Mary?
Well, I don't have, I don't have a lot, I just wanna say that with the weather being as hot as it is. You know, check on some of those elderly people or people who don't have air conditioning, you know, you can always help them out, you know. It it's a tough time, we've had a tough summer, it's, there's a lot of heat out there and not everybody does have air conditioning, so. Check on your neighbors, check on your pets too, and make sure that those pets aren't out there in that sun all day. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Chad?
I didn't have anything extra.
No big hot fishing tips this week?
No, you got skunked on Sunday.
Two things, they're kinda playing it with each other, um. Obviously, we had our first round of interviews uh last night in regard to the vacant council seat. Um filing for the election portion of that um actually opened today. Um and that will go to Tuesday, August tenth, um to file for um the election process, as we noted. There's more than two that file, we'll have a primary in November with uh the general taking place in February. And then just another reminder that you have your last set of interviews tomorrow night at five o'clock. And just for those that are watching on T V, and we originally had scheduled it for four, we had some changes in the schedule, so it's that'll be at five o'clock tomorrow night. We'll have our last three interviews, you know, I've had a couple of you ask me, okay, what do we do once we're done with the interviews? Um and I think that's a fair conversation for you guys to to think about is that obviously. We've set up the process of getting interest forms from there, you then move on to the next phase of of doing interviews. You know, once you're done with interviews, you need to be thinking about what's your next steps. Um you know, I spoke with a couple of you last night and, you know, my suggestion would be. Um based off of the information that you've received from the interest form, from the interviews, that maybe each one of you consider. You know, bringing a finalist or two, um you know, to the nomination process. I will say that nomination process could start as early as tomorrow night after your last interview. Or, you know, you may want some time to think about it, I'll kinda leave that up to you guys to to think about after your interviews tomorrow night. Um if you do wanna have a special meeting, you just need to give a three-day notice, so the the earliest you could do it would be Monday. Um based off of uh tomorrow night's interviews, but just something for you guys to think about and potentially even. Discuss how you wanna go about the next phase after the interviews, so. That's it, otherwise.
Alrighty, I'm sure you're excited about having all those daughters and the water rates going up. Actually, um this uh kinda had cool Mary's comments, uh. Be safe out there, we're gonna have uh the hottest day in a long time. I'm just glad I don't have no heat on, but I think that'll burn, that's for sure. Otherwise, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary, to adjourn, all in favor?